First item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step up to the podium to your right or left. State your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. I have a signing sheet and the name on the sheet says Keith Hunter. Mr. Hunter?
I guess I'm the only one who's here to make any comments.
You're welcome to do so.
I've been engaged for the help that I got with it.
So Keith, if you would step up to that podium.
About the problems on Simon's Road last time I was here last summer, it was about the turn lane and the markings of it.
Okay, so Keith, if you could start by stating your name and your address?
Oh, it's Keith Hunter. I'm at 1-7022 Northeast 170th Street.
All right.
That is on Simon's Road. I'm about the fourth driveway up past the park entrance. And as I was saying, the city did make some definite changes to the way that that was marked there, and I'd like to say that there has been a big improvement with regards to that. My concern then, of course, was my grandson just trying to walk from the school bus stop, but I have noticed that there are a few people who still haven't figured it out, and nobody seems to care. I've actually watched a cop one time see somebody do it and not do anything about it. That was a little discouraging, but that's not really what I'm here for tonight. I've been in that house, I've been in Kenmore for about forty years, living in Kenmore. Anyway, when my daughter turned sixteen, I really started getting on the city about the parking on Simon's Road because we can't get in and out of there safely. Now, going back just for a moment to talking to some of the people here about that turn lane, I mentioned the problem with the light at the corner, no right-hand turn on red, and they said, "Yeah, we realize it's not doing what it was planned to do because our traffic patterns changed over the years." They said, "We're gonna do something about it." That never happened. But before I run out of time, I really want to address the parking. Okay, it's one thing that I cannot get in and out of my driveway safely between four and seven o'clock five days a week, but what's going on on the weekends is really outrageous. It's been going on forever. Like I said, I was very concerned when my daughter was getting her driver's license. She's thirty-three years old now, okay? The problem still exists. Most, a lot of it's the boaters. Now, for a few years, they weren't doing as much, a fair price of gas or whatever, but they're back. And here's the situation. That's the state selling the permits that they do not offer enough parking for. You guys aren't getting anything out of it. There is another street over here that isn't a main arterial. There is no parking on Bothell Way. There is no parking on Wantita Drive. You go up and over Simon's Road and there is nowhere, nobody on that street parks on the street. Now, I've seen the UPS, it used to be parking across the street. I see UPS people, they have to park up on the sidewalk now, and that's what they do. Now, as I say, nobody who lives down there where I'm at or anywhere up Simon's Road is parking on the street. So I was told by David that the reason that the people here have decided that they wanted to leave the parking was so that the boaters and when there was an overflow from events at the park. Well, the boaters are in such a big hurry, they certainly don't care about parking laws. They'll big, huge truck to right up to the driveway. I've only once seen a police officer out there cite people tickets, but nevertheless, it's very dangerous. These people are coming from Briar or wherever, and all they're doing is causing a problem. Now, the other thing was these events, the overflow from a parking lot that isn't big enough in the park, okay? I gotta tell you something. Three times this summer-
Mr. Hunter, I need you to wrap this up.
Uh, huh?
Your three minutes are up.
Can I please just finish?
How long you got?
About a minute and a half.
How about a half a minute?
Three times this summer, I've seen cars backed all the way up the hill because they thought they were in line to turn. Three times on a Saturday. Hey, overflow, eight boat trailers can fit there, fourteen cars. There's a parking lot that says "City Vehicles Only." Now, I took a picture of it. What's in there? There's one little trailer, there's some concrete blocks, there's some bark, couple of branches. There's even a car in one of these photos here where somebody says, "To hell with it, I'm gonna park here anyway." There's enough room to park more than fourteen cars there. If that was a parking, I think it's a resource that's being wasted. And, you know, it doesn't matter as much to me, guys. I've been here a long time. I'm ready to retire. I'm leaving. This isn't gonna be for my benefit. I'm honestly letting you people know. When they finish those townhouses across the street-
Keith?
-it's gonna become a bigger problem.
Okay. Thanks for your thoughts.
Yes.
Okay. It sounds like if you have more to bring than, or to bring up, maybe another meeting is a chance for you to add on to, if you wanted to add some more comments.
I noticed Dave told me, this is the wrong night, I saw I'm talking to the right people.
Well, it's a public forum, so you're welcome to come and render comments. So thank you for that.
You were the right people to talk to about this, right?
Hard to say. But thanks for your comments.
Okay.
Maybe you can add more to it later. So before we move on, staff, it sounds like an enforcement issue, not a law change issue. Is that right?
Um, if it works for a complaint, just the problem, the best people would be the city council.
Or not. Okay.
But, you know, I can pass, um, you have this contact information through the sign-off?
Yeah.
I can pass that on to-
Okay.
All the best.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And that closes, unless there's anybody else who wants to render comment? No? That closes the citizen comment portion of tonight's meeting. Next item on the agenda is approval of the July 24 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to amend? I'm sorry, to approve or amend?
So, so.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All abstentions, raise your hand. One abstention, thank you. In light of that, the motion carries with one abstention. The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is critical areas and shoreline update, but before we get to that, I had sent out an email to the addresses for the commissioners tonight to talk about something, and I'd like to move to amend the agenda so we can give it some consideration. The topic, if you didn't see the email, was an article that appeared in the Bothell Kenmore Reporter around July 20th that covered in part the Planning Commission's presentation to the city council on July 9 regarding mobile home parks. And the article contained at least one material inaccuracy. In fact, the inaccuracy was virtually the opposite of what we presented. So I wanted to give the commission a chance to consider responding to that, and so I'd like to raise a motion to amend the agenda to include some discussion of this. I don't think it would take a great deal of time. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion? So let me open the discussion. Who here did not see my email?
I didn't.
I sent it out, that's all right.
And I just checked. When did you send it out?
Early afternoon.
You got it.
Yeah, okay.
And I was, and I was on-
Okay, I got you. So the email was just a copy of the article from the Bothell Kenmore Reporter, and I do have one copy of it. I think Commissioner Vanderline has it, if you want to look at it. But I also have an excerpt from that article of that inaccuracy that I mentioned. So I'm happy to hand that out, give people a minute or so to, or three, to read it over so you know what that's about. If anybody needs a copy of that, Commissioner Baker, want a copy of the excerpt? So what I have here is, let me amend what I just said. It's not an excerpt from the article. You can look at that in the article. In fact, Mike, can you hand me that article and I'll read the excerpt?
I'm circulating right now.
Okay. And then I'll tell you what it is I just handed out. I think everybody's now got a copy, is that right? And I'll give a copy to staff. Dennis, if you could pass that down to Mike and hand it over to Bridget. So in the article, it quotes me, speaking on behalf of the commission, saying, "The Kenmore Planning Commission tried to balance the competing issues of preserving existing affordable housing and increasing housing supply with its recommendations." So far, so good. Goes on to say, quote, "When we set aside certain areas in favor of certain groups, mobile home parks or seniors, we reduce further the amount of buildable land for more housing supply, which, as we've seen economically, has had the biggest impact on stabilizing rents in this area," Nugent said. Quote continues, "The only way to help low-income people is through massive government subsidies or construction," end quote. So I went back with Bridget's help to the video of that meeting, and what I've handed everybody here is an excerpt of my transcription from that meeting. And at approximately the one hour and seven-minute point in that meeting, Deputy Mayor Herbig said virtually what was quoted in the article, which is, "Our goal is to preserve stuff in the lower-" and I added a couple to give it context, and I bracketed where I added something for the context, so you know exactly what his quote was and what I'm trying to clarify. "Our goal is to preserve stuff in the lower-income end of the housing market, and frankly, at the lower end, the only way that gets built is through massive government subsidies or preservation of housing structures like we have here." Deputy Mayor Herbig concluded his comments, and I responded and said, "I respect our differences here," and then I added some other comments, but with respect to what he said, I said, "But I would disagree," and I think the commission would agree with this, "that if you're saying the only way to help really low-income people is through massive government subsidies or public housing construction, this," and this is where I raised a copy of the April 10, 2018 Seattle Times article, which was entitled, "As New Apartments Flood the Market, Seattle Area Sees Smallest Spring Rent Hikes in a Decade," and then I added, "has had more impact locally, that is, the increase in supply in the market than anything I've seen or that economists have said to help improve the costs of housing in this area," and it wasn't government subsidies or government construction. So I think that points out the extent of this inaccuracy. It's virtually the opposite of what I said and what I think this commission intended to recommend to the council. So the question is, do we respond, and if so, how? We don't get a lot of publicity, which is okay. I think this is the only time I have been quoted in the ten or so years I've been the chair of this commission. I think it's the only time anyone on this commission has been quoted with respect to something regarding the commission, and it's highly inaccurate about a very sensitive topic. And I think it reflects poorly on me and the entire commission. So I wrote, and I'll give everybody a draft, a copy of the draft of what I thought we might consider in terms of a response. It's not simply a correction point, but a little more elaborate, but primarily does correct the error that was published in the article. So I'd like to give, and again, Mike, if you could hand that to Bridget for the staff to look at. Do we need another? There we go. Does everybody have one? So please, take a few minutes, look this over, and I invite any comments about how Looks like everybody's about done. All right. Anyway, open the floor if anybody had any thoughts about this.
Well, I think it's reasonable to respond to it because I believe in what you noted, that the more we build, the more affordable it becomes. That's actually going on right now, that's that housing prices are starting to go down because they're catching up a little bit.
Okay. Anybody else? I saw Mike and then, okay. Mike and Debbie.
Yeah, I agree with everything that you've written here, and I think in addition to being accurate, it's very well drafted. The only two questions I would ask is, is moving the conversation, which this is a public forum, make the otherwise pretty, we've done a lot of hard work up until this point, and the council has some hard work to be going forward, does this make their job any more challenging? Does this bring new voices to the table? What I've liked about the process so far is that we've had the interested parties throughout, we've had the tenants. Shifting this to a more public forum, make the council's work any more difficult?
Right. It's hard to say. I would say this, we have had some of the interested parties from it, at least one of the interested parties has not, and that is tenants who are affected by constrained housing supply. And we'll see, because of that, potential increases or slower decreases in the cost of housing. So as I said at the presentation, and this comes from the California Legislative Analyst's Office Analysis of Affordable Housing Problems in California, which are virtually the same economically as the ones we're having, far more people are displaced by rent increases than by reconstruction or redevelopment. So they haven't, you know, they're not a critical mass, they're not organized, they're not all in one place. They don't know if their neighbor's getting a rent increase or how to organize their efforts. And yet, they're strongly affected by this. So it would bring that element, perhaps that element of attention to it. Would it make the council's job harder? Well, we've said all this, it's just correcting a mistake in the press. I don't see how that makes it harder. Certainly clarifies, you know, the deputy mayor's position with relation to our position. And I think, you know, he's got a legitimate position. I know it's shared by a lot of people. We've got a legitimate position. I don't see how it makes it harder to, muddies up the issue. I think if anything, it clarifies it. Anybody else want to comment on Commissioner Mulcair? Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Just in response, that's a compelling argument, too, that the people that have participated in the conversation have been the, I guess, the expected parties, right? The property owners and the tenants. And that other component of everyone else that's struggling, who may be cost burden, has not participated because they don't see that it affects them. And perhaps if this thoughtful explanation invites that conversation, that's a good thing. It doesn't really address, and our job isn't always to make the city councils work easier. But it does open that forum, which could be helpful, too. So I agree with that point.
Anybody else want to comment on Commissioner Mulcair's point? Debbie, you had your hand up.
Yeah.
Come on, go ahead.
Just a comment. I think if you wanted to make a correction of what was said, that's one thing, that's a correction. We could work with our public information officer to get that correction. This seems to me to go beyond to sort of an opinion, a striking opinion, and kind of presenting a full opinion, which is beyond a correction.
Yep.
So at that point, I think, again, I'm concerned that you're kind of, again, sort of lobbying more for your position, which has already been presented to council, and now it's in the council's hand, who are considering your recommendation moving forward. So I'm just kind of raising that as a question about whether it's the right time to start pushing again for the Planning Commission's recommendation when you've already made that, if the point of this was to make a correction of what was said.
Well, we're not lobbying the press. We're not lobbying-
Maybe lobbying is the wrong term, I would say, sort of, I guess, further pushing the position that you made to the council beyond the correction.
So this is omission. I mean, it's not like we're coming up with something new here. We presented this in public, in a public forum, to the council. They've seen it. Publics heard it. Public can hear it again if they want to go online. But these are omissions from, material omissions or inaccuracies from the article, so in that sense, they are both corrections. And I think it's important because if you read the whole article, you'll see, not just that they got what they quoted from me wrong, 180 degrees wrong, is they left out a lot of important things, including this one. So there's another part in the article that talks about, that summarizes our analysis and our balancing, and I'll give you the quote from that. This is the summary of, you know, eight months of our work. Nugent said that the commission rejected the overlay for many reasons. He said that it is restrictive, unsympathetic to property rights, and inconsistent with some parts of the city's comprehensive plan, which call for increased density on the downtown core to make it a more commercial and walkable area. So I would say, yeah, that's accurate, especially the last part about the downtown plan. But what she, what the author of this article, I think her name is Katie Metzger, says about the extensive comments we made about the burden and hardship this would impose on people who've been trying to help or who have effectively helped provide affordable housing in this city is that it's restrictive and unsympathetic to property rights. I think that's highly misleading. So I think it's helpful to state in this piece what she omitted in her article and what we stated in public and in the video, is it's more than property rights. It's a fundamental fairness question, but go ahead.
So I came up because I just wanted to point out that the article was written on July 20th. It's no longer on the front page of the Kenmore Reporter. It's now on maybe the second or third page of the news section. You can certainly get to it. If you searched for it, you would find it. And the reason I raised that is because when we talked to our public information person today, she said there hadn't been a single word or comment about that article that she had found, and we talked about needing to do a correction, and all agreed that that was appropriate. I asked whether the timing of this, which again is an opinion piece reiterating the Planning Commission's position on this topic, is appropriate, given that you made your recommendation on July 9. It is now August 7, and the planning, or the city council has been considering this issue in three meetings since you met. They'll be considering it again in September. And I will tell you from an outsider's perspective, it feels a little bit like lobbying, and I want the commission to think whether or not that is appropriate at this juncture.
How does this make the council's job harder?
I don't think I said it made the council's job harder.
No, I didn't say you did. I did.
I think what I'm saying is it's like presenting in a very public forum, the Planning Commission's perspective again, when in reality, the Planning Commission is finished with their job, and now it is the responsibility of the council to respond.
I hear you. This isn't about our job with the city council. This is about a couple of things. One, the integrity of what we say in public and how that's presented to the rest of the public. And regardless of who may have called or written, which sounds like nobody, doesn't measure who thinks what about us and what we've done.
Right. Again, I think a correction is perfectly appropriate. We've already checked with the information officer about making a correction, but I think this goes beyond a correction.
I get it, but you guys are clearly hostile to this, and I don't know why.
I think because the city council is now in the middle of a policy debate over this issue.
Right.
And to put an opinion piece in the local community newspaper about the Planning Commission's perspective feels inappropriate.
This is simply repeating what we've said before. There's no change.
I understand that, Doug, but-
It's the same analysis we provided the council. How does it make their job harder?
It, what it does is it said, okay, the Planning Commission has this perspective when you gave your perspective on July 9. That's my opinion.
Well, you want to reject this as an opinion piece, but what I've said in the draft that I've given to the commission is, it was omitted. First was a perfect inaccuracy. Let me finish. And the second was a complete omission and a complete distortion. By the way, they summed up our analysis. So I think they're both corrections. I know you want to call it an opinion piece because it makes it easier to challenge, but I disagree, and I think it's an important correction and omission correction.
Can I ask a question? Did you go, I have not gone back in and actually watched the meeting where we presented, so I can't say that I heard with my own ears what you're talking about, but I did go back and read the article, and I do think submitting a correction to the newspaper is appropriate. Do you feel that there's anything in the actual recording of the meeting that needs to be highlighted differently? I mean, why would you do that? It's a public record.
Well, anything in the meeting that needs to be highlighted differently?
So what I-
I'm just transcribing the meeting.
Yeah. What I feel like you're asking for is to point people to go look at the meeting and what was presented. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I invite them to. If they're interested in this, because this is the tip of the iceberg. You know, that was our comments, staff, my initial comments, questions, answers to questions. What did it take? Hour and a half? Something like that? Hour? So I purposely restrained myself from going into even more detail. We could have gone into people who are burdened, like, because of lack of supply and get notices of rent increases and get displaced, things like that. I didn't get into the downtown plan. I didn't get into the distinction between those mobile home parks and the parks that are near City Hall. I mean, we could have, I mean, it could have gone a long time, but these were the key mistakes and the key omission, I thought, that-
But that's in a public newspaper-
Yeah.
-as opposed to, like, I feel like the conflict is with the newspaper. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So-
So where else are we gonna publish this correction?
Okay, so would it, would it, could it just be a simple correction of the statement you made?
Well, it could be, and I'm gonna leave that up to the commission. But I think that the omission regarding the burden on homeowners, which was also part of the debate, not debate, but the exchange, between myself on behalf of the commission and Deputy Mayor Herbig, which is on tape and which was ignored by the author of this article, is a really big, is an important material fact. And in fact, it was, as I said to you at the presentation, why didn't you guys impose an overlay or recommend an overlay for all the parks or for these parks? That was the first thing I pointed out because, and we discussed this before the presentation, here are our reasons for doing this. It was a- before the presentation, here are our reasons for doing this. It was a nonstarter, as I said in the meeting, presentation to council, to take the owners of these parks, who provided the lowest cost housing in this city for decades, and impose a $12.6 million penalty on them from economic loss by this new zoning law after what they'd done to help affordable housing, a problem they didn't cause but in fact did the most to help. I think that's a really, regardless of ideology, regardless of property rights, regardless of partisanship, that's a fundamentally unfair thing to do. And I think to write an article and ignore all that is a fundamental omission. So I think it's, I do think it deserves pointing out.
So when there's a correction to a public volunteer, appointed volunteer, in the newspaper, are there rules that the city follows to, to request that the paper correct that?
Usually if there's something going out from the city for media, it goes through the public information officer who works in the city manager's office. That's usually how media goes out. And it's a city message. And that's if we were, if we were looking for a correction, we would, if the planning commission's direction was to do a correction, then we would ask the public information officer to send that correction to the paper. That's how it would work, whether it's the planning commission or the council. Okay?
And that's a good question. Thanks for bringing that up. Thanks for that answer. So I guess we could do this a couple of different ways.
And I would just want, I know you've mentioned about the overlay. And I know you may not be aware of this, but the council is, may be interested in kind of revisiting the overlay, whether it's a long-term overlay or an interim overlay. And that's something, again, that they'll be discussing in September. So I don't think the council has ruled out looking at an overlay.
Okay.
I'm just, just thinking that out.
Yeah. In fact, that I think only points out the added importance of bringing this omission up from the paper. But I guess, as I was going to say, we could do this a couple of ways. We could pass a resolution on this commission to make some kind of correction, and we can tinker with the draft. I only propose it as a starting point. And then I suspect, and staff can help me here, it would go to the public information director and/or the council itself to decide whether they're going to let this be, this statement be made on behalf of the planning commission.
That, I, for sure, it goes through the public information officer, and whether it needs to go to council, I'm not sure, because this is sort of the first time this has come up.
Right. Well, it's the first time I've been quoted. And so the city is, or the Kenmore Reporter is 0 for 1. But the alternative would be, and we've done this before on another issue, we can speak out as citizens. We were part of this. I'm not speaking on behalf of the commission, but, and those who are interested could sign this correction slash omission piece. So without the endorsement of the public information director or the city council.
So the question before us is, how do we want to proceed?
Right.
Do we believe that there should be a correction to what you feel is that you were misquoted? And you've gone back and looked at the meeting, so you know for sure you were misquoted. What I'm not clear about is, is the article an opinion piece or just a reporter covering the actual meeting? So, so it's news.
It's a news, yeah.
So it's, in your opinion, because she misquoted you, it's bias?
No.
No?
It's just an error. I don't know. Maybe she had a bias. I can't read her mind.
Okay.
But we clearly know she was wrong to wrote, to ascribe to me a quote I didn't make. In fact, it gives the exact opposite. But what I want to point out, too, it's not about Doug Nugent versus Katie Metzger. It's about the planning commission, the recommendation we made to the council, and whether that's accurate on a vital, on some vital statements about our eight months of analysis.
I agree with you wholeheartedly because it's 180 degrees opposite. And if it was just a nuance, this isn't a nuance. It's a, you know...
Complete distortion.
Yeah. The only thing I would say is, I think it's very factual, what you did here, and to put it in context. Maybe you could be a little bit more succinct. But, but beyond that, I think it's, it's perfectly fine. And I think it should be out there because some people might take this as true in their minds. And they're going to be talking from the podium there to the city council, not knowing that the planning commission had a different outlook on the situation. So I, you know, it's, it's good, there's a lot of false stuff coming in the news these days, and it's nice to correct it. And I think it's important to correct false information.
Dennis, did you want to?
I'm a little concerned about the length and complexity of the letter. I mean, I really appreciate it for being able to sort out and figure the facts. I'm wondering if what we ought to consider is having a meeting with the reporter, show them the statement or however you want to revise it, so that they understand that there were concerns about the way it was reported. But I'm not sure it needs to be a major correction. It seems to me, if you want to minimize how you write it, it's that second sentence was misattributed to you when it was, in fact, someone else.
Yeah. It's actually neither of us. The second, I transcribed what was, to the best I could. It's not, you know, people talk fast and all this. I think I got it right. And I invite anybody to double check if they want. But neither the deputy mayor nor I said exactly what she said I said. So that's why I had to give it some context.
Sure. I'm just wondering if maybe a verbal discussion, opportunity to share this information with the writer might be the place to start. And then you can decide where you want to go from there.
Yeah.
That's one thought, anyway.
Yeah. I think it's a good one. And I think we, as a commission, ought to consider that. You know, we could take this step by step. My, one of my concerns with that, however, is, as the staff has said, this is an issue that's moving pretty fast. By the time any of this appears in the Kenmore Reporter, if ever, this would probably be a done deal. And it will have no bearing on, you know, what the public thinks our role in this was. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Well, I, I wish we could have done it earlier, too. But I guess, you know, logistics just prevented that. And, and, you know, I respect what Dennis said there. But this was in a public forum. This was distributed to every reader of the Bothell Kenmore Reporter. So I think if we are going to do it, it should be, you know, in this form. So to me, there's two questions. First, the correction. I mean, is everyone, it seems like there's sort of consensus that at a minimum, we should correct the misquote. The second part, I think, if there's an opportunity to go through some drafts and some language and maybe revise that, that would be my leaning at this point. So.
Okay. Mike, you had your hand up.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the meeting, so I only have indirect knowledge of what was actually said. But reading this, I think it's factual. I think what you put here accurately represents what the commission's sense was. So my feeling is the correction is necessary and a good thing to do because there's very likely that we would have this come back to us again. I don't want to see what we, similar to what we've seen in the past, we have a parade of people coming up here and complaining or objecting to things that we never really said. And we've seen that before. We wasted lots of time on it. So I think having a, having this correction, it would be a good idea. I think, though, because this would be a correction, it would be a correction of a position of the city, that I think we need to be careful that that goes through the city process for issuing those and the media to make sure that we are consistent with the way, where the city council really is and where the city's position is and any other rules out there. So, yeah, I think a correction is necessary. I think we need to be careful not to go over into opinion on this. Unfortunately, in this country, media is likely free to say whatever it wants. We're not going to change that. It's something we just have to live with every day. But I think we can make factual corrections. We ought to leave that to the city and the professionals to do that.
Anybody else? So where do we want to go from here? I mean, we've got, you know, it's hard to find a, there's some, I hear, I'm hearing people say, well, we could fine tune it. I mean, some people say, well, let's just stick to the misquote. Some people are saying, let's go through city channels. And I think that's at least maybe the best first option. I'm not hearing a lot of, oh, let's all sign on if the city says no, because we don't know if they will. So I guess that makes sense, too. So if that's right, go ahead, Mike.
I'll make a suggestion.
Yeah.
And maybe people can build or respond to that. I would suggest that what you've said here is persuasive and is factually correct. And there's a lot of good technical information here. The media people could probably craft it into something that would have the maximum impact for readers. I would suggest, why don't we take this and send it to the media department and ask them to review it and put their expertise to it?
Okay. Anybody else? Do you want to make a motion, Mike?
I will make a motion that this, Doug's opinion, draft piece has been presented, be passed on to the media department and ask them to craft this into a response and a correction to the local media and any other sources where we feel that, they feel that this needs to be appropriate to pass on.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Scott.
I thought that it should be quickly done. And I don't know how quick they can do it. And I'd like to not change the factual basis in here, rewrite. No. It's, it's a little too long to read, if I was going to, you know, criticize it. But, you know, he's trying to be fair on the whole thing, it looks like. But I, you know, something concise that says it was incorrect.
So let's, let's, Mike, were you, that motion, are you talking about the whole piece? Because, again, we've had some commissioners say, well, let's just make a correction. And Scott's saying, well, it's too long. Do you want to submit the whole piece to the public information director and let him or her modify it as...
I would. Let them make the determination of where is the line between comment and opinion.
Okay.
Because then they can represent the city correctly.
I will point out, I'm repeating what was said in the transcript. That's not an opinion. So...
I wouldn't dispute that.
Okay. So I'm uncomfortable saying, oh, part of this is opinion. None of it's opinion. All of it is a correction of something that's literally from, transcribed from the video. And the other is what I think material omission from the article that's taken from the video. So...
And I'm not commenting either.
Right, right.
But I think that's, there's a...
Just so there's not confusion. People want to think this is an editorial piece or something.
That I think the media person or PR people could make a judgment on. But we may not be in a position to do that.
And I do think that your reasons for doing it, because you don't want the planning commission to be misrepresented or you personally to be misrepresented, also speaks to, you know, going through the right channels in the city and taking into consideration that the council's working on this issue, that it does affect people. But it's, you know, not, it's not unusual for things like this to happen. And how is the city going to handle that?
You, Vice Chair, you had your...
I just had a question. How the media person is going to review this? Is it going to be strictly for factual accuracy? Is it going to be the line between, you know, opinion and observable? I mean, what's the, what are we asking this person to do? I mean, is she going to be the arbiter of whether, you know, not only the wordsmithing, but the content? Because there's basically two parts. There's the click, the misquote, and then there's the omission, right?
Right.
And there's fuzzy lines. I mean, you know, whether it's opinion or, so what's the criteria in going to the media person? That's what I would like to just clarify. What will he or she be, be looking at?
So I was going to say that when we talked to our media person, what she had said was that she would have the online story corrected. She would talk to the reporter and fix the error about the quote. And then we didn't go any farther than that. There's no way to really fix the article with the quote. I think it would have to be a separate piece, I assume. So then where is it going to fall? It's going to fall maybe in letters to the editor or, I don't know where it would fall, but it would be a separate piece. And I think that's why I had raised the question of what, does the planning commission want to send in a separate piece that says, you know, here is our position on this, and here is why we didn't support this, knowing at the same time that the council is moving back to looking at that issue? You can see how it sort of sets up a potential concern. Factual, I have no question in my mind that it's totally factual. I'm just asking you to think about where it would fall in the newspaper and how that would appear.
Vice Chair?
Is our recommendation, it's posted online somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Is there a way we can provide, like, if you want to know more about the planning commission's position on this? I mean, that's one option if we do want to sort of avoid the whole question of omission and encourage people to take, I don't know how many people would actually take advantage of that. But that's just a thought, if we want to make it a little more palatable, if you will, in terms of a letter to the editor.
Well, personally, I don't mind what you call it. If you call it a letter to the editor, that's fine. If it goes under the correction heading, that's okay, too. As long as it gets something close to the amount of attention that the misinformation got. I'm not so concerned about the label. But Lori, you said something about the council's working on this and this, I'm getting lost in that part, like how that makes this undesirable because this is, this is, this isn't a new piece. Like, this isn't, hey, our position is, we've already told the world what our position is. They just got it wrong. So I'm trying to get the world to understand, to the extent they relied on this newspaper.
Right. Right. No, I completely understand that.
What we've already said. I'm not throwing new stuff at the council or even at the press.
I, I understand that. But if you think about how it would appear, the correction to the quote and to that discussion would appear in the story. They would actually fix the story. At least, that's what our media person said. If you take a separate piece and say, here are the factual, here's the factual information from the planning commission about their recommendation, even though it wasn't part of the story, it's, it was omitted.
Well, actually, it kind of is part of the story.
Well, let me finish.
Go ahead.
It was omitted. And so suddenly you have this long piece about the planning commission's perspective, primarily on the overlay and, and different approaches and TDR, et cetera. All I'm saying is, that makes that a central component of a newspaper story or article or letter or whatever format it appears in at a time when the group has moved on. The city council is now considering the planning commission's recommendations. There were no factual errors in the article about this material. It was omitted, but there were no factual errors in it, much as there were probably things that the city council said in that meeting that were omitted, that were said that were factual. So it just feels a little different to me.
Okay. So I'm going to read what was in the article that I think is the closest thing they have that relates to the $12.6 million burden this would put on the owners. He said that it is restrictive, this is in reference to the overlay, that it is restrictive, unsympathetic to property rights, and inconsistent with some parts of the city's comprehensive plan. I think from that phrase, all we have is unsympathetic to property rights. And I think, you know, we call it an omission, but that's, that's their effort to summarize the $12.6 million burden that this imposes on mobile home park owners. I think it's grossly misleading. So you can call it an omission, but it's partly in the article. It's highly misleading, and I think it deserves correction.
Would it be possible for us to submit this information to our media person and have them come back to us at the next meeting and make a recommendation of what, I mean, there's nothing preventing you, as a private citizen, requesting that the reporter correct it. But it does represent the city, so it makes more sense to me to go through our official representative.
Well, and I'm not challenging that.
No, I know.
I think we're kind of on the same page there.
I know. But it's a timing issue, too. I mean...
Right.
This could show up as a correction in November, and who cares?
Useless, obviously. And that's why, you know, I know Mike raised this and Scott raised this. And I agree. How long would it take the public information director to respond? And how long, how long before something would get to the Bothell Kenmore Reporter? What are the estimates on this?
I don't know. I'm assuming that, you know, once, once we, we say this is an issue, that that would become something that she would look at and how long that would take. I can't imagine it taking months and months to do.
How about a week? How about a week?
I'd imagine it would take, you know, a few days, whether the questioning would be if it would need to involve more than just the Public Information Officer. That's the question I'm not sure about. That is where time would be added. But if it doesn't, then that would, I would imagine, would be a pretty quick turnaround to get the information to the newspaper. Now, how long it takes the newspaper to do something with it, I don't know.
I get that. And they may do nothing with it. They may just completely ignore us.
They shouldn't do that.
Of course not. They shouldn't have done this.
Add an list of practices.
I'm not holding my breath, but, okay. So I think we have the essence of what we want to do here, and that is pretty much what Mike's motion is, which is to take the draft I've written, present that on behalf of the commission. It's a resolution, and it's a request that it be presented to the city's Public Information Director for a response, and a request that it be brought back to us for potential approval, and then submitted to the Bothell Kenmore reporter. Does that make sense?
Before the next meeting.
Yeah, before the next meeting.
So it's going to be done via email?
Yeah, although we can't, the OPA.
I know we can't do a group, you know, thing, but how does that work?
Well, it seems to be maybe the most efficient way, and staff, help me out here. We've got our, we've got our motion with a second. It's on the table, we'll vote on it. If it passes, you would take this to the Public Information Director, and he or she, I guess it's a she, would respond to the whole commission, so we'd at least know what she intends to do, and then we could take it up at the August 21st meeting. Does that make sense? And we'd have it in front of us before then, and then can decide how we want to proceed.
I think that's fair.
Yeah. Sound good? Staff, you want to correct me on anything there? Okay. So I think, any more discussion? Good. We have the motion, Mike Vanderlin's motion, to present this to the Public Information Director and get their response before the next meeting. We have a second. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, raise your hand. There being none, the motion carries. Thanks, guys. All right. Next item on the agenda, as I said, was Critical Areas and Shoreline Update Gap Analysis Continued. I invite to the presentation table the city's staff and its consultants.
So this evening, we're hoping to sort of review the recommendations from the gap analysis, see if you have any questions. We went through those in great detail at the last couple of meetings. We're just kind of confirming that you're okay with the staff recommendation, or if you have any other responses. We also provided a response to some of your questions in there, and then we also want to talk a little bit about public outreach and focus groups. I know we're getting started a little late tonight, so maybe we could sort of ask to go beyond nine o'clock if we are getting close to going through this.
Well, we also have August 21st, and that was a, you know, maybe, maybe not, meeting, right? And clearly, it's a, it's a meeting we want to have now for the first item on the agenda, so maybe we don't have to go beyond nine o'clock and still be able to finish it up on August 21st?
We could. I think the preference would, if we can get as far as we can, because that would then give staff more time to either get ready for the public outreach or start crafting amendments. So the more that we can get done tonight, the better it will be to keep this project moving along.
All right.
So I'm going to turn it over to Amy.
So hopefully you've had a chance to review. Yes, there you go. Hopefully you've had a chance to review the memo, which we've assembled, trying to kind of pick out the highlights and the items that we suggested in the first two meetings that were kind of the bigger focus, that we hoped we would get Planning Commission input on, and then could use that to develop further recommendations and specific code changes. So we've kind of formatted this thing into three parts. Part one is those questions from the gap analysis and our discussions of the past two meetings that we felt like we got clear direction on and had a good understanding of where you were headed, and so we've turned those questions or comments into kind of a consent list, potential consent list. So there's like, I think, 20, 21 different items that, going through the notes we had made that looked like our recommendation at that time was something that the Planning Commission was interested in endorsing and moving forward with. So I don't know if we want to go through each one of those, or if you have specific comments or questions on what you thought about each one? How you want to do that?
Vice chair?
I just have one question about one of the items. Are we going to go one by one, or just as?
As people have comments. I think maybe more, bear with me, more efficient, just to say, if anybody, if anybody has an objection or revision to propose, they bring it up, and we otherwise agree with it? Kind of by default? Does that make sense, or do you want to, does the commission prefer to go by, through each item?
Yeah.
Can you reload it?
Yeah. One, right? Let's see. That's the different one.
Maybe we should go through one by one.
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Nick can lead through it.
Okay.
Here we go. Oh, good. Okay. Back in order. Thanks.
So the vice chair wanted to clarify something. I'll let you do that.
And it was on number 11 on streams, about stream relocation. I just wanted to clarify that relocation, if I read it correctly, I think somewhere else, it's only for a public project, right, on number 11?
Let's see here.
And only for restoration purposes. I saw that somewhere else. Maybe it was in the prior meeting materials. I just wanted to clarify the scope of the stream relocation, because that's a pretty significant action, isn't it, to relocate a stream?
Right. It was only for restoration purposes.
Only for restoration, okay.
Right. So not for convenience, or to make more buildable area on a property.
Right.
So, yeah. But there are circumstances where relocating it and getting it out of a ditch and back into its original channel, that would be a relocation, but it would clearly be a restoration in that scenario.
And it was only for public projects, though, if I read that, not for, you know, private development?
It, it looks like it's on page 30 of the gap analysis, and it says, stream relocations may be allowed only for, and there are two categories here, all stream types as part of a public project for which a public agency and utility exception is granted, or B type F, which I believe are fish-bearing streams with fish use other than salmonids, and those for the purpose of enhancing resources in the stream. Is that right?
So I think we're back to, what's the best way to proceed here?
Rather we can bounce around.
Yeah, and maybe it would be more systematic if we just went through the list. And when I read these, my question is, we've got an issue, we've got a staff recommendation, but we don't have a reason. And I'd be, I mean, I'd be inclined to say, provide the reason, and we could yes or no, and then move on to the next one. I suspect most of these are going to be pretty routine or technical reasons.
Yeah, the reasons actually are in the gap analysis itself.
Okay, thanks.
So that's another way to follow along, those original big charts with the yellow highlighting. Talk about these different requirements, and then explain why the recommendation was, that the change be made.
So is that more efficient than just going through the summary, you think? We went through the summary, you got 14, 21 items here. Would it be more efficient for us to just go through each one, and for you to say, here's the reason? Or is that, am I being too simplistic?
Well, I think we went through the reasons in the last couple of meetings, so that's when we had the other consultants here, and we went through all of these one by one, and there was no, either no questions or no, and we're just kind of bringing it back to confirm that because there wasn't any questions or concerns raised, that the consensus is that you are okay with the staff recommendation.
Well, if that's the case, then I think we do a as noted kind of thing, and if anybody has a point to make about any of these, then we just do it by that, by one at a time kind of system. Does that make sense? So, part one, 21 items. Anybody want to raise a point about a staff recommendation?
I have a question.
Yes, Mike.
On critical areas of regulation, number one, I just wanted to ask, was there, what are the original reasons for this? Was there a safety concern in here, of why we would do this, or is that not really?
Why it was there in the first place?
Yeah.
I think it's sort of the ebb and flow of regulation over time to some degree. For a long time, in a number of jurisdictions, it was sort of the thing to put in a requirement for fences at the edge of buffers, and I think after a decade, or in some cases, fewer years, it's kind of, eh, that really wasn't the best idea. It sounds good, it feels good, but it can really get in the way of certain types of, you know, legal uses of property, particularly as I was discussing in some of the prior meetings with school projects or parks projects and those types of things. It can be real barriers to ongoing and continuing legal use of that particular piece of property. And so also, Department of Ecology in there, they'd been, over the years, developing and refining their management recommendations and their best available science code and model, and their code does not require outright placement of a fence at buffer edges. So as a source of best available science, the fact that they are not requiring it, just as a blanket statement, suggests that it is no best available science reason for the city to then require it. But to still leave it as an option in certain scenarios where the director, the planning, the city manager, whoever it is that has the authority, could make that decision on a site-specific basis, and then go ahead and require a fence, and then that would lead you to number two, about what kind of fence.
I was specifically concerned about asking whether or not there was a safety concern, if having a fence helped alert people that they're going into a wetland or a stream.
I haven't heard of any safety issues. I think it was all about just preventing intrusion and protecting the habitat and the ecology of the wetland itself.
Okay, anybody else? So I think we're in agreement on the part one.
Hey, okay.
Part two.
Great. So part two is a series of questions, and they're, it's not a very long list, actually, but these are the ones that popped out in the last two meetings, where there was a little more discussion, request for additional information, or, you know, what would this look like, or can you give us some more reasons why or why not? And so we tried to pick out those topics, write, kind of capture the question, and then provide a little bit more information, either just an expanded staff recommendation or some other background information before then concluding with a staff recommendation. So these are ones that maybe we should go through one by one, I think, if that works for everybody.
Any objection? Go ahead.
Okay. So the first question was just what types of projects should be eligible for consideration under the public agency and utility exception process? So we, there wasn't really a need to add more background, but we have a list of potential types of public agencies and utilities that are in other jurisdictions, or just commonly understood to be, you know, having some sort of a public purpose for which you would want to give a little more deference to the proposal, and allow for some modifications that might not be appropriate on, under other properties, in order to enable that public purpose to be implemented. So the list includes things like, you know, just obvious utilities, but it also includes things like schools and parks. Roads are certainly a public agency, an important piece of infrastructure. We could develop, as it notes up there, some additional performance standards that could go along with those, so that there's a few more sideboards on the exception. It's just not like, oh, yay, a freebie, but some fairly strict standards about a process you still have to go through, and these are things that are already really in your critical areas regulations, like mitigation sequencing, but it might be helpful to emphasize those and be a little bit more explicit within this section, since it is granting ultimately an exception to those particular uses and proposals.
Comment? None? Okay.
I've got a question.
Please cut.
What kind of things might be on the borderline that you wouldn't consider to be a public agency utility exception?
Well, a common utility example would be bringing it specifically from a main line to someone's residence. That wouldn't, that wouldn't be a public agency or utility exception. I'm trying to think of other borderline issues, and I think in some jurisdictions, there've been questions about whether schools were a public agency or, and/or utility, and I think that's why it's really helpful to explicitly state that. I think questions can come up around parks as well, in terms of whether or not they are a public agency and serve some sort of a public purpose. Those are the things that have, in some areas, been in that kind of gray area, like, is it or isn't it? And we're proposing that it be considered that.
You talk about a process to figuring out who can apply to this?
Yeah, or a process that describes the review process and then conditions. So these are the public agencies and utilities we propose be allowed to pursue an exception, and then we would need to spend some more time developing what the process actually looks like, what those conditions and sort of best management practices, or rules, or other standards that would go along with that, just to sort of tighten things up and make sure it doesn't have the appearance of being a freebie for public agencies.
Sure, and we're not going to decide on the process, then?
That's something I think that, that's one of the public, the focus group kind of topics, that's something that we would need to take some more time to flesh out. There's a variety of case law and some various other things that we need to look at, as well as some more specific best available science. Pull that all together to try and develop a revised code section.
So you don't want any freeloaders, is that, would that be fair to say?
I don't think anyone wants freeloaders, but I think there are good reasons for taking a look at public agencies and utilities and giving them a, at least the potential to vary from the normal standards so that they can accomplish their public purpose. But there, like, the Growth Management Hearings Board, for example, had got, had some concerns about how the process was devised in a previous iteration of the code, and I think Debbie and Lori can talk more to that.
Right.
But Mike, did you want to jump in?
Just tag on to your comment there, I just want to make sure, I didn't quite clear here clearly. So when you've done your deep dive on this, and you come up with a process, you're going to bring it back to us for review and recommendation?
Right.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, actually, for all of these, the next step for the staff would be to draft amendments. In some cases, you already have draft language. In other cases, with focus group help, then we would come back with a draft specifically for you to review, like, here's the revised chapter, like we would normally do, so you can see how it all fits together. I was going to say about the public agency and utility exception. So the city, many years ago, 10 years ago, decided that that particular exception, the way it was written, applied only to utilities, like sewer, water, power, those kinds of things, which has caused a number of issues related to other public projects, like roads. If you have a road that's already established and you need to extend it, and you don't have an exception, then you, and again, the exception has a bunch of criteria that you have to satisfy, but it makes these public projects exponentially more difficult if you have to go through a full critical area review process versus an exception with criteria that you can show you meet. So that's the idea of taking the public agency and utility exception and really saying, okay, these are the public agencies, here are the criteria, and if you can meet these, you don't have to go through this separate process, is kind of the goal for this.
I would think that a key part of this would be coming up with a clear definition of what is public and what is truly a public agency.
Right.
Right, the gray areas here are what are going to.
Right, and that's why the list was put in here, to see if you had any thoughts about what should be considered a public agency for purpose of this exception.
Well, I think even some general definitional language, you know, a public agency is a com-
of what is public and what is truly a public agency.
Right.
Right.
The gray areas here are what are going to.
Right. And that's why the list was put in here, to see if you had any thoughts about what should be considered a public agency for purpose of this exception.
Well, I think even some general definitional language, you know, a public agency is a component of a community, state, federal government.
Or quasi.
You can come up with all sorts of examples of what that was, but that would also create a line between those entities that are not a component of government.
Right. Interestingly, we had crafted some amendments several years ago, and one of the terms used was private utility. But that, the intent of that was, that was a city attorney request, because some utilities, telecommunications, which we consider utilities at this point, are privately owned. They're not government entities. So there has to be a way to distinguish between those, I guess.
Yes, what I had in mind is things like, what is a public university? What is a church? What is a private school? You know, there's a line there that, so having something we understand that it's a component of government, I think draws a line, and you can maybe come up with some exceptions against that. But I think you need to have a brighter line here than a list.
Right. Yeah, I think we can do that, just sort of thinking about why these particular uses should be able to pursue a public agency utility exception. And really, the fact is that, in most of those or all of those, it's not like, oh, that project won't work for you, so no project. Or once you go do that somewhere else, you can't just move your park, you can't just, particularly for public schools, which now require like 40 acres of land, it's, it's not so simple that you could just sort of mitigation sequencing your way out of not having the impact, and just doing the project somewhere else or changing it in some way. So utilities and those types of things typically have to be, they're either already there, or there are very specific ways that they need to travel to where they need to go. So, but yeah, we can use that to help develop, I think, some definition guidance that will help, especially if there's any kind of a conflict, or we don't list absolutely everything, then you'll have a definition to help you make the decision about is it or isn't it?
Yeah, I just had a quick sort of clarification. The type, the type of review and condition, I take it, will be specific to the type of public project, whether it's a road, a school, a park, right? Once, once it gets to that level. In other words, it won't, the process won't, the review and conditions will be specific to those types of public projects?
Right. Anything that meets
Eventually.
that will go through that process.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Okay. All right. So number two was just, and this kind of came up, I think, at the end of the last meeting, about whether or not the city should, oh, for Pete's sake, should consider expanding its incentives to encourage restoration and then look for ways to remove other disincentives, and if so, what that might look like. So we kind of put, there's a short bullet list of ideas that could be considered and incorporated into the regulations, critical areas regulations, or other parts of your code, actually, that would support implementation. So some common ones that other jurisdictions use are to fast-track permitting for projects that include restoration above the minimum required to mitigate for impacts. There's permit fee reductions. There's other ways that you can kind of simplify a process to reduce something like a building setback, or a height standard, or some other dimensional quality of the proposal, if providing that, that variance for density or height or some other variable would enable you to have a larger buffer, or enable you to do some other buffer enhancements, or those kinds of things. So, and there would obviously, you need to, it wouldn't be, again, a freebie where you can like, oh, you know, 200 feet, you can go just to get five feet of buffer enhancement. So that would, we need to put some more thought into that, but that's an option. Also, just making sure that, and this came up last time, that if you do a restoration project and it ends up, if you were to just apply the regulations, you'd have a much larger buffer on your property, your neighbor's property, that you could sort of fix the buffer at the pre-restoration footprint, so that you're not punishing yourself or somebody else for doing the restoration work. And then finally, there's just some other kind of tax benefit things, and I'm not sure how often this might be useful, but like King County's got its public benefit rating system, which you can provide tax benefits for preservation of onsite resources. So larger parcels that might have wetlands or some other critical area can get some kind of tax relief if they go through a process and kind of formally dedicate and establish some protections for that property in perpetuity.
Comment? Okay.
I do, please. I like the last bullet in particular. Maybe think about it in a little different way. Is there, are there example, other than just educating property owners about King County's existing system, do we want to be more proactive and suggest that maybe Kenmore wants to establish some incentives that will include tax benefits for, for environmental improvements?
I don't know what your local tax structures are like, or.
I don't either. That's the question.
So I have no idea.
Do we have something existing today, or are there examples of other jurisdictions that have provided those sorts of incentives?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer. So I think it would require some more research to see if that's, A, ever been done, and if there are options locally to do that. I don't know.
Can I make a comment? I do know about some provisions like this on Vashon Island, and it has to do with preservation of farmland, which might not be our particular area of interest for that public benefit rating and tax break. But I know that there were several property owners that banded together and were awarded that King County provision to hold farmland in trust for the future. It's different, but
Right.
But it's kind of the same idea.
Right. Okay. So in general, everyone's on board with exploring either number five, but also the earlier bullets, and just seeing other ways that we can make sure we're not punishing property owners for making enhancements, and also trying to provide some real relief for people who pursue it on their own, in terms of either faster permitting or fee reductions, those kinds of things.
No objections?
Okay, great. Okay. So this next item is, might take a little bit more time. So, and there's a good chunk of background in there that I provided. This question is basically, how should the city modify its designation of fish and wildlife habitats of importance? Which species or habitats should be dropped from or added to your current list? So just for background, I pasted in the WAC, which describe, provides the definition of fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, and provides a very specific list of things that jurisdictions must consider for classification. It doesn't mean you have to include it, but you have to consider it. And so that's where we're going to go next. And we'll go through each of those one by one. And then it also talks again about the importance of including best available science. And include has been, through case law, reinforced that it means not, this is different than consider. You must actually include the best available science, and decisions must be made about classification and designation using the best available science. So those are some other kind of topics to consider, whether you might be creating corridors and how you might protect those, other buffer considerations. And then has also a list of things you may consider, which has to do with salmon habitat and some other, other topics. All of that gets down to, we went through each one of those cities must-consider items, the first one being areas where endangered, threatened, and sensitive species have a primary association. And then sort of, in a second column, we provided a Kenmore specific assessment, like, does your code already do this? What are the real, what's the existing condition like in Kenmore? Like, do you even have threatened and dangerous species? And then finally, we conclude in the third column with the actual staff recommendation. So this one was fairly simple. You already include in your definitions of fish and wildlife habitats of local importance, areas where endangered, threatened, and sensitive species have a primary association. Our only real recommendation is, and this was something that was talked about last time when Dave Klein was here, is that we really need to link better the floodplains as an area where endangered, threatened, and sensitive species have a primary association to this particular designation. And this will help with our compliance with the National Marine Fisheries Service BIOP and the National Flood Insurance Program and those types of things, just to make it a little more clear, and also give you a trigger, which is required with the particular door that you've chosen, that Dave talked about last time, site-specific, is some sort of mechanism for having folks provide that analysis that you will be required by FEMA to produce at some point in the future, if they audit you, showing that you did consider the potential impacts of a project that was proposed in the floodplain. So that's recommendation one right there. Any discussion on that?
Yes, Mike?
Just thinking about the extension of the previous topic, to the extent we might be able to provide financial incentives for providing, preserving habitat, is there a way to be able to extend that into, we're looking at things like, if you have a lot that has large trees on it, and is there a?
Large trees.
If you log those trees, you would destroy the habitat. But if you didn't do that, the owner could be penalized financially because they couldn't use the property
Right.
the way they wanted. Is there a way to provide some financial incentive? I'm thinking specifically about things like, there are organizations like the World Wildlife Federation, Audubon Society, others, that actually aggregate, buy and aggregate properties for this purpose? Is there a way to kind of look at that model, not that the city would buy the properties, but to provide an incentive that would, to the extent that this was a public, you know, maintain the livability of the community, could we provide some tax relief or some other form of incentive for people to maintain the habitat the way it is?
Right. So depending on the location of these trees that you're talking about, if they're in, are you talking about trees that are already in a buffer and they're required already to preserve them? Or are you thinking trees that are otherwise out in the landscape that don't necessarily fall within a buffer, but still provide habitat?
The latter. And it may not just be trees.
Right.
It could be a water feature, it could be lots of different things.
Right. And I, I know your city, and I'm not as familiar with these, has already some tree vegetation and preservation standards linked up with development. So it might be a matter of looking at what that says already, and then seeing if there's ecological benefit to incentivizing in some way preserving trees beyond whatever the minimum requirements are that are established in the code. And again, I'm not familiar with that piece of code.
That's one way to look at it. I was trying to flip this kind of the other way and say, right now, we pretty much have negative incentives out there. We're saying thou shalt not.
Right.
Without any real incentive or positive encouragement
Right.
for a homeowner to do that.
Right.
Could we create incentives, whether it was tax forgiveness or something else, that would provide a benefit to the homeowner to behave?
To do more.
Incentive to behave in the way we'd like it to.
I, I wonder if you're talking a little bit about, you had mentioned organizations that might take like a conservation easement
Mm-hmm.
over a property. I think if you take, if there is a conservation easement, I think you could get tax relief potentially through the county. So.
Yeah, I think that's the public benefit rating system is essentially that.
Is that the kind of thing that might
Yeah, I think that's going in the right direction.
fit with what you're talking about?
More information on that, how might that be used in Kenmore?
Okay. And not necessarily just like an area, but specific elements of habitat, like trees or some other habitat feature?
If we've identified species in particular that we wanted to protect, extending that to say, well, in order to do that, they need to have the habitat, there are areas like St. Edward's where we've got some rules out there already, but most of the land area which these species might inhabit, inhabit, are not going to be within that confined area. So we want to maybe to incent homeowners to maintain the habitat on their own property, rather than making that a negative enforcement issue, make it into a positive incentive
Right.
that would make them want to do that and actively encourage them to do that.
Yeah. I think Kirkland might have something similar. And I think they've partnered with one of those organizations, and they provide recognition for people who have like salmon-friendly yards, and they incorporate certain elements of, either related to pesticides, or they've provided some water feature for birds, or they've had some component of native vegetation on their property. And I don't know if it's a, so much a financial incentive that's involved in that, but I think it's more a recognition thing and a signage that they get to put out in front of their house, that they're a wildlife-friendly designated yard. We could look into that a little more and see maybe how that's worked for Kirkland, and if that's how the publics receive that, and whether anyone perceives that as being a benefit to them, or something they would see as an incentive or not.
And I do think you could check with Lake Forest Park, too, because there's several little streams that come through, and
Yeah.
they go through private home ownership. And as the homeowner restores stream beds to encourage salmon spawning, they do get recognition, but I don't know if it's financial.
I think it's more recognition.
I think it's more recognition, but still, it benefits
Right.
the ecosystem.
Yeah. And it, the company that I used to work for, I think that received a designation from Kirkland or from one of those organizations as being a friendly business, because they had like a water feature and some native plants and a variety of other things. So it wouldn't just be homeowners, but it could expand to businesses and.
And it could be plant pollinators and
Right, yeah. Butterfly stuff and bee stuff, yeah. Just I think all sorts of things.
The name of the organization is, I should have that. I might actually have it in my phone.
If you think about the green building designation, and how many firms are using that today as a way to differentiate themselves.
Right.
And it's become a competitive advantage for them in the marketplace.
Right.
Something similar to that, I think, would follow along the lines of you're talking about. You have a certification program that says you follow these certain criteria, and you get designation that you can then use in your advertisement and marketing.
Right. And I don't know if maybe the city could feature different properties or something on their website and have like a, I don't know, there could be something fun done with it, I think, that people would get pats on the back for. It's something to explore, certainly.
There is an organization in Snohomish County called Wildlife Habitation, and they do work and partner with municipalities to build ecosystems that are friendly to pollinators, birds, and insects. So. I don't know if King County has an organization like that.
Maybe the Conservation District would have a lot of ideas, too.
Or your master gardeners
Yeah.
might have a connection that way with municipalities, but I don't know what they are. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, and some of that, I don't know how much it would be code versus some other sort of companion outreach, public education program of some kind, but, okay. Okay. So.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to maybe clarify something. Okay, we add this explicit statement, does that really have any bearing on what's currently allowed or not allowed, you know, in or near floodplains? I guess I'm not quite
Right.
clear on that. You know, what if any, you know, consequences are there for adding this explicit statement?
So a development, and it depends on how we compose the code, but certain developments, or maybe all developments, new developments in the floodplain area that are proposed, and they'd still need to be consistent with your zoning and, you know, other sorts of things. But they would be, this would trigger a habitat management plan, or some other sort of assessment that would look at whether or not that specific proposal in that specific location is actually going to have any sort of adverse effects on listed species and their habitat. And for many proposals in a floodplain, there may be absolutely, and depending on what it is, there may be no reason for concern. And others, it might include a list of recommendations or some sort of minimization measures or something might come out of that.
So it would trigger this sort of added level of review or scrutiny?
Right. And it's, right. And it's a level of review or scrutiny that's currently required under the National Marine Fisheries Service Biological Opinion.
Oh, okay.
It's just right now, there isn't.
Okay.
Yeah. So you're going through door three means that every development that proposes something in floodplain jurisdiction and floodplain something in flood plain jurisdiction and flood plains is supposed to complete, to some degree, some kind of an endangered species impact analysis, and this would be what you would actually use to trigger it. I'm not sure what's triggering it now, but it's a vulnerability if some people are developing in flood plains without, and then FEMA comes and says, okay, show us your assessments that looked at all your flood plain developments and you can't come up with one.
So they're already, I'm sorry, I'm looking, so they're already required to do this kind of review? We're just, Kenmore, just linking to the federal?
Yeah, and it would be that the cities, it'd be the city's job to require that review. So the city is responsible through their flood plain regulations for implementing that at the local level, and then FEMA is kind of high up, but they are going to be supposedly, we've heard, doing audits or in some ways checking in at any time they could ask for your environmental species act document.
Kenmore is really tying their ordinances and recommendations to the federal level. I'm looking up the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, but they have many incentives for property owners, so I don't know how that ties into the ordinances, but there's a whole page of stuff.
Yeah, and I think I looked at that and got some of the ideas from that list, because WFW has like a land use planning.
Because what you're doing, like one of them is called Backyard Wildlife Sanctuary Program, where you're creating a habitat management system through your incentives in your city. It gets pretty detailed. I think the goal is to update our ordinances so that we can make that available if it's applicable, right?
Right, and I think there wouldn't be any code, I'm not sure what link, there wouldn't be any code requirement or...
No.
But it's a nice program that would be a nice companion to your code.
Yeah.
And might help without, in a non-regulatory way incentivize
Right.
Enhancement.
Right.
And ideally, you could get pretty far with that and not have to use like regulatory hammers to
Right. That goes back to Mike's incentive ideas.
Right. Yeah. So we'll look for ways that incentives can be incorporated into the code as well, but those are probably worth another discussion at some time about how the city could use some of these other programs that are out there. Okay. So is that a yes on A, in terms of retaining listed species and adding this statement that gives you a nice clear nexus to your requirements for impact assessment in flood plains?
Any objections? No. Okay.
Okay. All right. The next one is then to look specifically at habitats and species of local importance as determined locally. So one of the things that is written up in the WAC, so the Washington Administrative Code, is a requirement that counties and cities consult WFW's priority habitats and species information. So we went ahead and did that, and we talked a little bit about this last time, and within the city, we've got this list of, one, two, three, like six priority species and habitats potentially. And so we looked at each one of those that are mapped by Fish and Wildlife in the city and then made a recommendation about each, whether we thought it was appropriate or not necessary to actually include it in your specific list. So great blue heron, rookery is an active nesting trees, retaining that is definitely our recommendation. It is a priority species, it's very important in Kenmore. I list all the different ways that I saw, just right off the top of my head, how it's important to the community. Everything from names of apartment complexes to your cute logo, the heron hugging the So any discussion of that?
Amen.
Okay.
I'm temporarily filling in for our chair.
Okay. The next one is anadromous fish. Right now, your current list includes listed fish, and several of those are anadromous, but there are also other anadromous fish that are also very important that are in some of your water bodies. And so that, and also, there's also a requirement in the code that you, in the state law, that you give special consideration to anadromous fisheries and those sorts of things. So this is one way to do that, as well as to pick up protections and study of streams bearing coho or sockeye or some other anadromous fish. So again, our recommendation is to add this as an explicit wildlife habitat of local And this doesn't add a lot of, any, I don't think it adds any regulatory burden, the stream buffers are already linked to whether or not fish are present, anadromous or otherwise, but there would be potentially a requirement for a habitat management plan. And that would just be a few other items that would be part of your critical areas report that you're required to prepare anyway, but you might have to hit a few other specific topics in that report, just to make sure that you are fully addressing the anadromous fish component. Discussion? No. Everyone's okay with that? Okay. Great. Okay. The next one, I went back and forth on, is the piliated woodpecker. So we are recommending that you add it for a number of reasons that are kind of described there, but St. Edward's State Park is the only area that Fish and Wildlife currently maps as piliated woodpecker habitat, but we know that there are piliated woodpeckers elsewhere within the city, in the, I'm sure Swamp Creek has got them in that complex, as well as many other riparian corridors and forested corridors. I found a study that actually was just published, I think it's not even formally published a month or two ago, by a UW professor and a grad student looking specifically at piliated woodpecker habitat and its use in what they called lightly and moderately urbanized areas, which that designation, I think, applies to several parts of the city of Kenmore. There are specific measures that State Department of Fish and Wildlife recommends for urban and suburban areas that talk about things like retaining trees, focusing on retaining snags, those types of things. And the piliated woodpecker is a very charismatic bird, it's a large, it's very noisy, it's kind of a really neat species to watch, but it's also really important in terms of how it modifies its environment and makes, improves the habitat or makes it more accessible for other species that come behind it in terms of creating openings for other nest cavities or allowing other species that don't have that great hammer beak to forage and get food out of these trees that they modify.
Can you just make sure they don't do it Saturday mornings at 6:30?
I know. And then, either and/or both, I looked at the tree retention regulations a little bit, just thinking about that the fact that these recommendations are very focused on trees, snags, large trees, your tree management and protection regulations do that a little bit, but there's a gap in there, and either we could boost the tree regs and kind of try and fill that gap to the benefit of piliated woodpeckers and the other species that would benefit, or simply by adding the species to the list, then you would again pick up those same WFW recommendations and apply those to site-specific proposals where there's potential for woodpeckers. I think either way, you can kind of get to the same outcome. It might be a little bit cleaner if it's, the piliated woodpecker is designated specifically as a Fish and Wildlife Habitat of Local Importance, but I think you could get there either way in terms of actually protecting what the piliated woodpecker needs.
We have a tree policy in the code, right? Is that going to affect that?
Well, that's what my, one suggestion is to actually look at that and take it a little bit further so that it picks up, for instance, the tree regulations don't mention snags, and snags are very important woodpecker and other species habitat.
What is a snag?
It's basically a dead tree or a half-dead tree, so it's got decaying wood, you'll see a lot of them out in the Swamp Creek complex, they're just kinds of big snaggy-looking things that usually have a high occupation by insects and those types of things, and they're very good for food sources. They're also a lot easier to excavate, nest cavities for birds, so they use those a lot of for nesting sites. I think bats can use them as well, so there's a variety of species that benefit from snags very specifically.
Well, this brings up a subject that, you know, I've got a dead tree here, I got it cut down in my yard, it might come crashing down on me while I'm sleeping.
Right.
So...
Hazard tree regulations wouldn't, would still rule, so public safety, et cetera, would still be, I think, priority number one, but in those areas where snags could be retained, where if it fell over, it would just be now a downed piece of wood on the forest floor, then that would be something you'd want to do, or in a buffer, if you could, it would be something you'd consider and maybe locating or placing a structure on a property, if you're like, I could put it here and save three snags, or I could put it here and I only take down one alder. So it sort of helps organize how you might approach your site placement, mitigation, sequencing, minimization of impacts to species, those types of things.
Does this impact single residences?
I don't think it would, no. I can't think of a way that it would. If you were a proposed new single-family residence in a forested tract, and presuming you had maybe a buffer or you didn't have a buffer, it would just guide you to, in a way that's consistent with your needs for the home and where it needs to be located and site setbacks and those types of things, to make choices about where you place it on there, if there's flexibility. If there's no flexibility, then down goes the snag and down goes the tree. I think that's how it would work.
Right. And I think it is a different approach. If we, if this were to be tackled through the tree regulations, it would apply in all cases versus if the piliated woodpecker is listed here, then you're really only talking about that in the event that your habitat management plan shows that there's a woodpecker and you need
Right. Yeah, because
You need to address it.
So it's, if a woodpecker, this woodpecker is on your property and he's got a dead tree he's working on, and you want to take it down, then you've got an issue to deal with, is that correct?
You could, right. Because if a piliated woodpecker was identified as a species of local importance, then there would be standards that would relate to, you'd have to do a habitat management plan, which is to say, what are the features that are keeping the habitat?
And it would just require you to kind of document your thought process on why are you taking it down, are there alternatives? Could you relocate the house? Maybe instead of chopping the tree down to the roots, you could just cut like the top half off so that if it did fall, it wouldn't impact a residence or any other structure. So it just, I think it just sort of encourages all property owners to just think about ways that they can still accomplish their project while minimizing impacts to locally important species.
So is this on the extinct list or is it?
It's not, it's on a, it's a priority habitat and species list, so it's on Fish and Wildlife's list, and it's mapped currently, there's a very large polygon which you might be familiar with, it's basically St. Edward's State Park. That whole area is piliated habitat, woodpecker mapped breeding area. But there, and that's another issue too, is whether or not you designate only those areas that are mapped by State Department of Fish and Wildlife as your areas of local importance, or if you apply the definition and think about piliated woodpecker habitat in other areas that are not necessarily been mapped by Fish and Wildlife. Like I mentioned Swamp Creek complex, there's, I'm certain there's piliated woodpeckers there, but again, you already have wetland regulations protecting that, you've got your heron, rookery, stream buffers, all those types of things. So there's a number of things already in play there that accomplish the same purpose without having to
Yes.
Think about the woodpecker specifically.
So if we say, yeah, we want to put it on the list right now, automatically it goes to another federal regulation to reference on what you got to do for that?
Right. No, it wouldn't, not in a federal regulation, but typically when you designate species that are on Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife's priority habitats and species list, they've developed management recommendations, and typically regulations will refer applicants to look at those recommendations and see if and how they can incorporate those into their project. And for the piliated woodpecker, the management recommendations talk about things like retaining the largest trees on site if you can, preserving snags if you can, those types of things. And so it just sort of forces you to be more thoughtful about how you do your, how you implement your proposed project on a site, emphasizing tree retention, snag retention, where it's not incompatible with your proposal.
Yeah, I got some concerns about it. I'd like to see what the language is on it, because I've got some concerns.
Okay.
Mike?
Two questions. One, when we're talking about this, what would end up in regulation? Is this recommendations or requirements?
It would be a requirement that you prepare a habitat management plan if there's a reason to believe that there may be piliated woodpecker use of the property. And then the habitat management plan would evaluate whether or not that potential is real or not. It would describe how the proposed project, what measures it used to maybe minimize the potential for disturbing those trees, and then if tree removal and snag removal happened, then it might propose some mitigation measures or something that would sort of compensate for the loss of those. And those might include like planting of some additional conifers elsewhere on the site that could eventually, over time, become piliated woodpecker habitat, or, there's a number of kind of different things that you could do, but it would pretty much be applicant-driven, it would be based on the proposed project, what their opportunities are, what their space limitations are. So it's very site-specific, and it's not, it's not prescriptive. So the recommendations are still just recommendations, but they do guide you through a process for mitigation sequencing, for avoiding and minimizing where you can, and describing how you went about doing that.
I think some more clarity of this. Where is that line? Because I think what you're sensing is a concern about this becoming a requirement that would put force a property owner into a use
Like save all trees or something?
So I think we need to be clear about where that line is, particularly not only what the decision-making process is, but who makes it.
Okay.
The other thing I just wanted to maybe put into consideration here is, we've designated some nature conservancy areas actually, and created zones of that within the city. I'm sure, I think Swamp Creek is contained within that, but I think that there's more in there. Is that an option for how we might apply some of these exceptions?
Yeah, I think so, particularly looking back up at some of the earlier WAC provisions where they talk about other mechanisms for preserving blocks of habitat, and, because a lot of the regulations really focus heavily on wetlands and streams, but there's some really great upland habitat that serves a lot of species, and piliated woodpecker, St. Edward State Park being one of those.
So maybe if you could look at those
Yeah.
Nature conservancy zones and see just how those might line up with
Whether you designate specific blocks of habitat and...
I think that might get us out of the single-family area into areas that are really very sparse and are really more applicable or appropriate.
And if piliated woodpecker in particular is a concern, then we could also, instead of referring people to look at the management recommendations and then come back to us, we could incorporate specific management recommendations into the code and then provide all of those, you know, this is not applied to this, or a variety of other ways to sort of limit that and make, make it so that property owners do not, are not unduly burdened by this requirement. So we could kind, we could go either way on that, and I think we could make this as fine as you want, you just have a longer section of code, but I think that's probably fine, that's a concern.
I got another concern. So the homeowner or whoever wants to do their development, they have to hire a... have to hire a woodpecker expert to propose their, their plan of action on the, on the site. And, you know, I got a concern about, and I'll tell you why, because I, I was dealing with a piece of property for a client that was a steep slope. It's this, it was the highest point in North King County there was in, not including, you know, towards the mountains. And they, City of Lake Forest Park required a wetland study on a forty percent grade. Okay? And then, and then we appealed, we went to the hearing examiner and we lost because we didn't do the study. And, and we even had on the record that there was, that it wa, it wouldn't make any difference. Okay? And then we went to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals said you didn't do the study, so you, you lose. And that's the kind of stuff that I hate to see frustrate somebody who, a client who just got, you know, really? You know, it, it was insane. And the Court of Appeals put a stamp on it. And it was just, it was, I mean, made my head spin because I think I could, I couldn't conceive of losing that case, and I did. So...
Right.
I've got a lot of concerns about that and hiring a, an expert and going through all that stuff and...
We might be able to add some other requi, like, a piliated woodpecker study would only be required if the proposal was going to impact greater than X acres or X percent of an undeveloped forested site. Or, so there's a number of ways I think that we could tackle that particular concern that would still be consistent with science.
And another question is, how endangered is this bird? Is it, you know, I, I mean, how many are there around there? I mean...
I was gonna say, I think there are a lot of questions that I've heard. And so it seems to me that what we need to do is we need to come back with more information about how many there are, if we know that, or where their areas are. And then talk about different options. The option of just using the mapped area, which is just St. Ed's, the option of perhaps identifying larger areas, you know, where a certain percentage of a site, the one that you had just mentioned. Anyway, I think we could come back with a series of options for the commission to consider, if that seems appropriate, along with the factual information. What are the WDFW standards, et cetera? Does that...
Yeah, that, yeah, I think it's, we need to have a conversation on that.
Yeah, right. And I think we could pull that together by the 21st with no problem, so...
Can vice chair have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I, I agree with that. I think that's a, that's a good approach. I just wonder if we have any data or knowledge about how it's working. I see Kirkland and Bellevue have done this. And if there's, you know, what impact, if any, it's had on those, you know, communities. I don't, it doesn't say how long they've, they've been enacted, but...
Yeah. I can follow up with those jurisdictions and at least get some anecdotal...
Find out how it's gone and what effect it's had on, on, you know?
Like, did it really matter, or that kind of thing?
Yeah, in terms of, you know, any private development or private homes, or, I mean, we have piliateds in our, you know, in our, in our home, probably like many people. I don't know if it's breeding habitat. I don't think so, but, if the scope, I think, is really important to...
We just have them coming through. They don't live there.
Right.
They just knock on your door.
They just knock on your door.
Okay. All right, we can do that. We'll follow up the other jurisdictions and at least get some anecdotal information from them, as well as the other information you've asked for. Okay. So maybe on the piliated woodpecker, for now. The next one, let's see here. Ah, okay. This is, so biodiversity areas in corridor. Again, this is another, and I provided the definition for those explicitly. Those are WFW definitions at the, in the footer of the table. Oops, where is it? Oh, where are you? Maybe it was up here. Oh, there we go. Sorry, it was on the previous page, if you wanted to take a look at the definition, just to see if you have any biodiversity areas besides the one mapped one. And again, this completely overlaps the piliated woodpecker polygon, the WDFW map. So they consider St. Edward State Park to essentially be piliated woodpecker habitat as well as a biodiversity area. And some of the reasons that they gave specifically for designating St. Edward's as that is that it contains old second-growth stands with remnant old growth trees, excellent forest habitat in an urban area. As I noted in here, the Swamp Creek Stream Wetland Complex, again, along the, and along the river and Swamp Creek, I think also meets the WFW definition, although they have not mapped it. So it's that question again about whether or not you might want to designate just the mapped habitats, or think more broadly about areas that meet definitions. And we could also generate our own map of those so that it wasn't so hypothetical and definition-based, but use the definition and create a Kenmore specific map of those. One of the reasons, so I, a little bit more information about St. Edward State Park, just for context for all of this. And this relates to some case law that Lisa, who was here last week and the week before, told me about. And St. Edward State Park is managed by State Parks, and it has its own state park management plan, which talks a lot about preserving forest canopy and guiding towards old growth characteristics, and those types of things that are really great for piliated woodpeckers and a whole variety of other species. And if you could rely on the state to implement its own plan and to maintain the property in perpetuity, then that would be great. But one of the cases found, the Growth Management Hearings Board, that just relying on the state, state's management of a property was kind of insufficient in that particular case, because maybe state fish gets into economic problems and ends up selling off some of the property, or maybe it wants to build another best year inside the park and changes its plan. So those kind of uncertainties are one of the reasons that, in this particular case, the state said it was not good enough to just say, state's managing that land, that's good enough. So that factored in again to our, our recommendation at this point to add that as a formal area of habitat importance for you.
Hey, can I have a question on that?
Sure.
So State Parks runs the show up there, right?
Right now, they do, yes.
And then, and then this proposal, if, and I, I don't know if I'm ri, right or not, Kenmore would have more say in what goes on?
Yeah, they, they still have to comply with your regulations. So if you had a regulation that specifically called out this biodiversity area, and it had any sort of recommendations or requirements in it, or referred to WFW's management recommendations, then that would be something that the State Parks would have to reckon with in developing their proposal and evaluating its impacts. And they would have to consider the impacts on your designated priority habitat.
And you're thinking that the State Parks is not doing a good job? Is that...
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that the state says that it's not good enough to rely on state management and state plans to continue to do that. I imagine they're doing a great job, I don't know, but the city can't count on the state continuing to do a good job necessarily, or that it might not change its plan that it currently has in place, so...
So you, you've got a problem with their plan that they have?
I don't have any problems with their plan.
Okay, well, I just...
No, I don't have any problems with their plan. The only risk is that what if State Parks changes its plan? What if State Parks proposes something else that is not consistent with their current plan now? And you don't have regulations or, you know, some other mechanism for protecting and preserving the biodiversity area or the piliated woodpecker habitat, then...
Maybe I could interject an example here. I've seen some of this in other parts of the state. The state legislature decides to close its budget gap by selling the park?
Yeah.
Or the state legislature decides that, gee, I could use that land to put in a brand-new state building of some sort, whether that be a mental health facility or office space or anything like that. It has, the legislature has the ability to be able to make those decisions. They may make decisions that Kenmore doesn't really think that it's in its best interest. So I think that's where the state regulation could give us the, some oversight or opinion into that.
Sure, because, but my interest is like the Daniels Project, for instance, that's, I, I think is approved, as I understand it. And it's not gonna affect that, is it?
They have the building permits in hand, so they have vesting, so they wouldn't be vested to these new regulations.
And what about the, the ball field that they were gonna improve on?
Those areas are specifically, the polygon that Fish and Wildlife has drawn excludes those big footprints. The ball fields are cut out of the polygon, the big best year building or whatever the...
Seminary building.
Seminary, that's excluded.
Okay.
So they were very careful to draw at least the lines as currently following the forest edge.
Great, that helps.
So, excuse me, but we're talking about the shoreline jurisdiction here, right?
A very small part of St. Edward's is in shoreline jurisdiction.
Right.
Just the first 200 feet. The whole rest of it is outside shoreline jurisdiction. No, these are, these are the critical areas regulations that apply to the whole city.
Yeah.
Later on, we'll talk specifically about the shoreline master program and shoreline jurisdiction. This is for the whole city.
Okay.
Any further thoughts on that? I think this might fall into the bring more information, maybe, with the piliated woodpeckers, particularly since they're the exact same polygon, and these are the only two polygons of either one that are actually mapped in the city of Kenmore. So we'll bring back a little bit more information that the piliated woodpecker discussion will help you maybe decide what to do here and whether you need to do anything at all.
I'm sorry if we've, if I've missed it in previous presentations. Have we seen a visualization of that polygon?
Um, no, I don't think so. I could definitely provide that.
I think it would be helpful.
Do we have internet right here? Because I could easily pull it up.
Why don't we bring it back when we bring back with the rest of the discussion, so it's in context?
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay. The next category is do not add the following. So again, these are priority habitats and species that were called out by State Department of Fish and Wildlife. These are mapped within Kenmore. So the first one, do not add, is the purple marten. They have a very specific point on their map showing that there's nest boxes by the marina. We went and took a look. They're no longer there. Couldn't find anything anywhere else. So based on that, no purple martens found. No need to designate purple marten, is our conclusion. And then on the next two, wetlands and freshwater ponds. The wetland one just seemed pretty redundant with having wetland regulations already. And it didn't seem that requiring a habitat management plan on top of the requirements already for wetland critical area studies added anything beneficial to protection. Right now, your list already includes Class One category wetlands, or Class One under your current system. It may be Category One or Category Two under the Department of Ecology system. And you could remove that because, again, I think your Category One wetland protections already cover your bases. Similarly, freshwater ponds. We took a look at the city aerial photos, and the only, there's like a couple of potentially naturally occurring ponds, and they already seem to be encompassed by, infringed by wetlands themselves. And so the wetland regulations already provide appropriate buffers and protection and, and those types of things. So again, it, it's just a situation where it didn't seem to add any, any value. If you had some ponds that were, for some reason, had no wetland fringe and were in the middle of the city and were occupied by some really amazing birds or frogs or something like that, then, then maybe it would make sense to add specifically freshwater ponds as a habitat of local importance. But we didn't find that. Any question on our do not add list?
Okay. Good, all right.
Great. Let's see, what's next? Okay. Finally, we have remove. So, let's see here. I guess it's not quite final. We recommend at this point removing the bald eagle from your list of Fish and Wildlife habitats of local importance. As we discussed last time, it's not listed by the feds. It is also no longer even a state priority species. It's doing really well and is thriving in Lake Washington and the urban areas all around Lake Washington, and it's pretty well adapted to the urban environment. So for that reason, we thought that having people do habitat management plans for a bald eagle didn't really seem to add a lot of value and didn't seem to really necessitate any real changes to any kind of proposal or project. You would still not be able to chop down a bald eagle nesting tree. There's other laws that prevent that sort of modification. But in terms of buffers and timing restrictions and all that sort of stuff, it doesn't seem to really be an issue for the local bald eagles.
If it's no longer a protected species, what other laws would...
Um, it's no longer listed under the Endangered Species Act, and it's no longer a state Fish and Wildlife or a state priority species. There's still the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, which prevents, like, you can't take down nests and actively nesting birds, of migratory birds, and bald eagles are migratory. And then there's also, what's the other one? Oh, the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, which is very specifically about bald eagles and golden eagles. And it has similar protections in there for nests and for, you can't, you know, shoot a bald eagle, those kinds of things. So those are, those are still in play, and those are federal regulations.
But Kenmore wouldn't have any oversight or enforcement over those regulations, right?
Not really, no.
Is the federal government equipped to enforce?
Well, I think if we, if we knew there was a nesting tree and a development came in, we wouldn't, we, we would kind of recognize that there is a tree with a bald eagle in, and we would say you can't cut that down, whether it...
Yeah. For, yeah, for projects that have SEPA requirements, and again, not all projects would have SEPA, like a single-family residence, but SEPA should pick up those significant habitat features and processes, I think, yeah.
Just so I'm clear, though, by removing that language, we would be, we would have enforcement capacity as a city today?
It wouldn't, I don't think it would change your capacity. It's, yeah, not...
So what this standard does, if we leave it in here, is this is the case where a habitat management plan is required. So we would be talking with the developer or the property owner about doing a management plan. And, and then once they had done that, then there would be measures that we would expect them to take. Without the management plan, these other rules are still in play, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't get to the level of specificity of the habitat management plan.
Okay.
Go ahead, vice chair.
Yeah, I just had a couple, I, I think this all makes sense for all these, all these reasons that you've, you've all inherited. More of a process question. So what happens if in a few years, you know, the bald eagle population suddenly plummets for, for whatever reason? How, how often is this revisited, I guess, within, you know, the city's planning period? I mean, that may be looking at way farther than we have, you know, a reasonable way. But I'm just wondering, what's the process in, in for revisiting it, for this or, you know, perhaps other species, if some traumatic thing happens?
Wouldn't that be covered by our first section, that's habitats with associations with threatened and endangered?
Yeah, if it became federally listed or state-listed. But if it became maybe just a priority species again, then it wouldn't necessarily get picked up. But again, it might be something you would pick up through SEPA. I mean, it's still a...
Okay. So there would be some provisions in, in the current process to address that if, if it did come to pass.
Right. And one of the questions we haven't gotten to, and I think it's coming up a little bit later, is about your process for nominating species to be included.
Right.
And so I think, I'm not sure if we got down into the weeds on that, but whether you could do it annually or if it's part of your comp plan. I, I'm not sure what the process is. But I would assume that at least annually, somebody with a concern could start the process.
That's great. So there are ways to address that if it happened. Okay, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Then the... Then the next couple, commercial and recreational shellfish areas, you don't have, same thing with kelp and eel grass beds. So we're not recommending you add those. We already talked a little bit about the ponds under 20 acres, naturally occurring ponds. Again, we're not recommending that you add specific protection for those. Ponds that are greater than 20 acres are shoreline jurisdiction, and that would be Lake Washington. So we already have protections there. The last, I think it's the last, Waters of the State. So we're not recommending that you add the blanket Waters of the State as a designated fish and wildlife habitat of importance. And I think we've provided the definition of what that is. But essentially, it's surface waters, it's groundwater, it's it's all waters. Yeah, so it would that would then encompass underground waters, and it would encompass ponds, which again, we've already just discussed that we don't need to add ponds. And this leads a little bit into some of our later discussion about whether or not the city wants to think about the groundwater specific regulations under the Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas. So whether or not you wanted to add some protection specifically for underground waters and reasons you might want to do that if there's a lot of septic systems that are failing and that maybe there's not already a process to force those into compliance and hooking up to sewer. More and more, there are different ways of dealing with stormwater runoff from new developments, and some of those include things like injecting water down into the groundwater or the aquifer. But those, I think, are already regulated by the state, so. I think where I'm going with this is I think we're leaning against not recommending it, but certainly want to hear the discussion.
Leaning against not recommending.
Leaning against recommending it, yeah.
Comment? Okay.
Right. Okay. Oh, and then the last two again are not applicable. I don't think you have any water bodies planted with game fish in the city. And you don't have any designated state preserves or wildlife areas. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Would she include aquaculture type ponds if someone was in a either private or commercial fish farming business?
I wouldn't consider that a naturally occurring pond. Oh, you're speaking specifically about game. No, I don't think aquaculture. I think we're talking about like if you had a little pond and fish and wildlife threw a bunch of trout in it so that kids could have a fishing derby or something like that. But a constructed facility for aquaculture purposes would not be a a pond planted with game fish.
Okay.
An interesting question, though. I never, yeah. I'll make sure. Because that's a new question. Okay. Any other thoughts or thoughts about other species that maybe should be added that were not State Department of Fish and Wildlife priority habitats? I think those are the big ticket items in Kenmore. Okay, then our next question was just about the process and what should the process include? Right now, your code says see the city manager or see the city for regulations about the process. And I think we couldn't find those, right? So those maybe don't exist or they're really hard to find. So just a few recommendations for the types of things you'd want to include in your nomination process would, you know, making sure that these are not frivolous nominations, so that there needs to be some rationale based on science, including discussion of whether or not there's even a viable population in Kenmore and what that contributes to biodiversity. Whether proving that there's not other regulations that essentially get at the same protection. An example would be if you've already got tree regulations that protect the particular tree that some species might use, then you've already covered that. Or if it only uses wetland habitats and we've got wetland regulations, then maybe, again, that would kind of knock that out. Proposed geographic boundaries, the specific list of the species and functions. I think this is just to make sure that it doesn't end up becoming the entire city of Kenmore if there is a pillated woodpecker flying across it or something. You would need to be a little bit more focused on what are the actual necessary habitats for that species. And then kind of documenting what the causes are for vulnerability. So like a robin, for example, or some other bird that's very common, unless we bring DDT back or something, they're they're not particularly vulnerable. It kind of brings me back to the pillated woodpecker question. I think someone asked about what the risk was to it currently or how common it was if it's threatened. Because they're so dependent on those large conifers and snags and sort of those decaying older tree communities, the loss of those is a very real threat in many urban areas. Okay, and then finally, what the environmental and non-environmental impacts would be of designation. So from a legal, cultural, recreational, economic significance. So if designated a species ended up meaning that you can no longer have Kenmore air or something like that in your city, you'd certainly want to flush that out. One thing that came up already maybe is that the nomination process should be clear about when and who and how you actually bring the nomination forward. So I think we'd want to include that in our list.
Public's notice requirement?
I would think that it should, because there's certainly citywide implications for that, yes, yeah.
And would it have to be a Kenmore resident, I presume, or no, or is that up for? I mean, could a, you know, an outside group come in and want to designate something in Kenmore?
I think I've typically seen that it be limited to residents or business, you know, people who have some stake in Kenmore. So if a business owner or somebody who has some other.
Or a resident or some.
A resident, yes, yeah.
Physical connection.
But somebody from Wenatchee can come in and propose a species.
So that's clarified, or that's still that's kind of the practice, or?
It's a little bit open, so I think it would be something you would want to be clear about. And if you're very specifically want to limit it to residents or property owners or something like that, then we should be clear about that and state that.
That makes sense.
Good idea.
To anybody to come in, yeah, it could be anything, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay. Any more conversation about the nomination process?
Anybody?
And there are a number of really good examples out there that have been through some growth management hearings board tests. So we will look at those and make sure we're not getting sideways. The next question, this is relating to kind of the discussion of whether or not the city kind of wanted to have regulations to protect groundwater in the absence of actually having critical aquifer recharge areas that are important for drinking water, which is what the the actual critical area is. And you were asking like, are there gaps? Like, what do the state and feds do? And so I asked around in the office and then dug into some other documents that ecology's prepared, and I just plopped this in there because it seemed like the best summary of how local government, local planning fits into the whole overarching state and federal picture. And kind of the bottom line is that a lot of those state and federal regulations, they might govern the use when it's in place and have things to say about how it disposes of waste. But there's triggers for that, like they only come into play when there's X pounds or gallons or of waste. They don't say in the first place whether or not that's a use that you should have in your city in a particular location. They've got different thresholds where you might be like, I'm not really that comfortable with that use being right here, even if it's the state's okay with it, your tolerance, your community's tolerance for risk might be lower than the state. So there's a variety of ways to kind of approach this or think about this. If having specific regulations isn't desirable, then another kind of option to indirectly do the same thing would be to look at your zoning and pick out from all the different allowed land uses and developments which ones might rise to the level of of being suspicious or potentially having impacts. And then look at where those are allowed on your landscape and see whether they there actually is any overlay of those allowed uses with areas of your city that are more susceptible to penetration of waste into the aquifer. So and then you can adjust zoning maybe as needed, or or maybe you'd find there's no issues because all of the allowed uses that you have are in areas with very low susceptibility to contamination or or some other geologic feature is going to prevent it from being a concern, so. Kind of some ideas for you to consider. I don't know that we have a real strong recommendation on this one. I don't know if Debbie or Lori, you've got more thoughts?
Anybody?
I think my only thought was that when we talked, when we were initially discussing this, it seemed like the idea was that the city might want to have a regulation that they could use in the event something came in unexpectedly that might influence the groundwater. And I guess I'm thinking like in all of our zones, we allow, we have to allow for regional facilities. And we may or may not ever get a regional facility, but if a regional facility came to Kenmore that might have some influence on groundwater and the city was concerned about that, this would just give us a tool. Otherwise, we don't have any tools to address that. Now, that was just that just came up in the original discussion of why we would even think about doing something. So I just pass that along for what it's worth.
Okay, Amy, anything else?
Just interested in your thoughts and got any direction or more questions that we could come back with more answers?
Yeah, I guess so. So this is for commercial developments, I would imagine.
Yeah, it wouldn't be applied to single family. There'd be, I think, a long list of uses or zones that we could just knock off right off the top and say these would not be required for X, Y, Z, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and take them completely off the table, so that then it would be looking at, and you could make a list of industrial or regional facilities or.
Gas stations.
Some way, gas stations, dry cleaning, you know, some way define that a little bit.
Do we know where these aquifers are in the city?
We've got some pretty good information. I think that I think we included some maps in one of the earlier presentations, and I'm not sure. I think some of that may also have been in the gap analysis as well. So there, let me see if I can just find that real quick. Yeah, you don't have any critical aquifer recharge areas, but we do have maps showing just based on geology and those types of things, what areas might be more susceptible to contamination from land use activities if there were to be a leak or some other sort of a disaster that occurred.
I mean, I wouldn't it would wouldn't hurt anything to have it as long as it's got defined, you know, close. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, a company that has solvents that they're manufacturing or something like that, you know, I mean, that would be a perfect example. But I don't know, there should be a list, I suppose, of types of activities.
I think it was just in the presentation that we included those images, so we could, I think, I don't know if you've got the handouts for that, or we could bring it back as part of the memo, so you've got a bigger map.
You mean the one with the yellow stuff?
Yeah, yellow stuff and some green stuff, and I think there's some other.
I saved that.
Okay, good.
So I think I think what you're looking for there is to try and limit it and and get some sort of suggestions from staff about what those uses might be, so you can kind of get an idea for that.
And then kind of it's a part of that same question was if you did develop some kind of just in case regulations to address groundwater, what might be required and what it could cost applicants? So we included just a little bit of information here about what a Level One hydro geological assessment could cost. And of course, these are highly dependent on project complexity, site specific conditions, et cetera. But you could find them on the order of $2,000 to $4,000 for the Level One. And again, a Level One wouldn't be required for single family residences or a whole long list of uses in the city.
What about Kenmore air? I mean, they're on the water and they use gasoline or or diesel.
Yeah, I'm I think that a lot of state regulation applies to them because of the risk of the direct water, surface water pollution and those types of things. So and they probably are, I don't, maybe I shouldn't, I don't, I don't know that they are, but they might be one of those uses that rises to the level that it is under careful state regulation. They exceed whatever thresholds for use of fuels or storage on site of fuels or I don't know if they have underground storage tanks or any of that kind of stuff, but.
So so we should do an exception for Kenmore air because they're regulated otherwise?
I think you've asked the question is is would Kenmore air fall onto this list? And so I think that would probably give us some direction to check about if it would or wouldn't, or what would cause it to be. That's probably the flip way of answering your question, that we can bring that more information on that.
I think that just in case is a good idea. A lot of this seemed to be directed, though, toward new development.
Yes, that's what I was just gonna.
I'm concerned about what's the maintenance requirement, you know, they could agree to something and a year later, you know, the pipes are leaking or whatever intervention that they put in place failed. What are the requirements there?
And that was one of the kind of reasons that was included in Department of Ecology's reasons for a city having some authority is that even the best laid plans fail. And if the state doesn't notice it or they don't have the resources, chooses not to notice it, or it's, you know, doesn't quite rise to their idea of an emergency, but it could be a city's idea of an emergency, then again, it would sort of give you a tool to generate some enforcement action of some kind. Yeah, I think it wouldn't impose any, it wouldn't impose any new retroactive burdens on existing developments or uses that are already in place. I think it would mostly be useful for citing and locating new developments. And then maybe as an enforcement tool, if there is some something that happens unexpected, that you might be able to get a response started more quickly than the state or the feds could.
Okay, so it being 9:30, I think that exhausts all the time we have budgeted for this room and this meeting. Is that right? Or?
Right, it's your choice.
Right.
Yeah.
So I want to get your sense of whether we need to, whether we're likely to be able to get as far as we need to at the next meeting on the 21st, or if we need to have a special meeting. I know there's some commissioners that will be out in September, and we may have trouble getting a quorum then. At least the first couple, the first meeting in September.
I think we've got, we've got three questions left in this section. So if you're having a meeting on the 21st, we could either complete those three questions on the 21st and also the discussion on the focus groups and public outreach process, and also bring back the additional information that you have to date. Unless if you just take quickly a look at those questions, as if when you've looked at these in your packet, if there are any immediate information needs that you would like us to bring back for those last three remaining questions that we could do at the next meeting.
A fair point. Anybody have questions that they or information they'd like staff to bring back for those remaining questions? I'm seeing none.
Two of those are geo hazard related. And then I think the the last one has to do with criteria governing expansion of roads. So, it's a pretty, I think that's low hanging fruit, that particular one. The geo-hazard one may be a little more discussion.
So, there being no requests for further information, it sounds like we could probably address all this at the next meeting?
We could, we could, yeah. And if, as an individual commissioner, you think of a sort of a burning issue or question I wish I'd asked that last night, you know, you can also send us an email as well.
All right. So, I think that concludes the substance portion of the meeting and satisfies the agenda. Is that right? Are there any announcements? Any new business? None? That being the case, I hereby adjourn this meeting.